Hello everyone, you know John chapter 4 verse 35 says, "Don't say four months until the harvest is ready, but open your eyes and look at the fields; they are ripe for harvest now." And that is exactly how the ministry has been so far in 2015. God has opened our eyes and shown us how plentiful the harvest really is. Just to highlight a few things for you, so far in 2015, our homeless ministry has ministered to over 4,000 people out on the streets. Every month, every week, people from Bethel Church go out into the community and help feed the homeless and minister to their needs. During our Easter service in St. James Park, we ministered over 300 people and we saw the gospel of Jesus impact many lives. It was an amazing outreach. Andrew Allen has now led the homeless ministry on 53 different outreaches or events. And 2015 isn't even over yet. Praise God for that. This has also been a great year for our neighborhood outreaches and our Bethel cares teams. In the last 10 months, people from our church have made over 88 visits to retirement homes and hospitals so that they can minister to the people living there. 88 different times, our Bethel cares teams have gone in to visit people, to pray for people, to share the gospel message with those who, in some cases, they can't even leave their rooms, let alone make it all the way to church. This has just been an amazing year, not only have we visited people and helped people, but we've been able to feed over 7,000 people because of our monthly food distribution days. Every month, our churches feeding people who are hungry. We're helping people who are hurting. We're visiting people who are lonely. And the love of Jesus is healing the brokenhearted and setting people free. Bethel Church, the fields are ripe for harvest now. Thank you for helping us reach our one square mile. I cannot wait to see all that God is going to do as we finish out 2015 and head into the new year. God bless you.
Greetings Bethel Church, friends and family. First of all, I would like to give my heartfelt thanks and gratitude to Pastor Allen and to the official board for this incredible opportunity to serve as the children's pastor of Bethel Church. It's been an awesome year seeing new families come into the church, kids giving their life to Christ, and exciting growth in many areas. Within Bethel Kids, we have experienced many exciting changes throughout the entire department. Having moved all the classrooms into the main building, in addition to the new check-in stations, the families are able to check in and drop their kids off with ease, allowing them to get to the service in a timely manner. Another huge win for the kids department was creating a place called Bethel Kids Sanctuary, where the kids can come and have their own special worship and prayer time. Each week, kids from our toddlers class all the way up through 5th grade get the opportunity to worship God, learn what worship is, and why we worship. In March, we saw 60 hands raised at our kids musical production of Spend a While on the Nile that was put on by our Kingdom Kids Choir, kids from Music Academy at Lynn Haven, and kids from Kids Club at Castlemont. What an incredible evening watching these kids sing and act for God and seeing lives changed as a result. We brought on Michelle Hawthorne, who has been a huge addition to our Santa Clara campus as she leads the Bethel Kids area with honor, integrity, compassion, and heart for the families. In August, we saw around 50 hands raised at our backpack distribution service and gave away 800 backpacks. Thank you for helping make that a successful day. Next year, Bethel Kids will have the opportunity to take their servant leadership to the next level by loving on and reaching the kids in our neighborhood each month. Next summer, we will be launching a VBS-style sidewalk Sunday School in the neighborhood near Castlemont, which is going to be incredible time as we make the Bible come alive for kids and families alike. I am excited about what God is doing in the hearts of the young ones here at Bethel and in our neighborhood. I can't wait to see all the exciting things that will happen over the next year in Bethel Kids.
Isaiah 43:19 says, "See, I am doing a new thing; now it springs up. Do you not perceive it? I am making a way in the wilderness and streams in the wasteland." This verse tells me that the issue isn't whether or not God is doing a new thing. He is. The real issue is whether or not I can perceive it. This put me on a journey to understand and act upon the new thing that God is doing through the ministry in which I serve. I realized that one important new thing God was doing was refreshing my perception of worship. This affected me to the point where I changed the name of our department from Creative Arts to Worship Arts. God has granted me great musical opportunities, but music really wasn't the issue here. This new thing had specifically to do with worship. I started looking outside of my personal preference, what I was doing and how I was doing it. I've sought out and listened to perspectives that differ from my own, and what a great journey it's been. I've long desired that personnel on our platform would be a true representation of the multiple generations that make up Bethel Church. And it thrills me to say that we now have teenagers who consistently minister with us at both of our campuses. Now, these changes are of paramount importance. Pulling together for common purposes is what Christianity is all about, and it's what Bethel Church is known for. Though taking disparate personnel philosophies and preferences and then aligning them toward a common goal may be hard work, the payoff is well worth it. Worship arts is an unequalled opportunity. We can now provide the structure allowing those new among us to learn to the point where they can minister to our church family. And just as importantly, we can provide the musical veterans among us the opportunity to share my wonderful experience of establishing relationship and pouring life into generations coming up after us. This leads me to one of the new things I'm most excited about. The Wednesday afternoon worship rehearsal that Jimmy Adams has started with our junior high and high school students. On any given week, Jimmy has between 12 and 15 students meeting together to learn how to play worship songs. And I need to point out that these rehearsals are free to these students. This is one way where assuring our church has a bright future in supporting our worship services. I'd like for one of our students, Evelyn Peña, to share what these Wednesday afternoons have meant to her.
Good evening, church. It is my honor to stand before you tonight and celebrate what the Lord has been doing through Bethel Home Groups this year. Home Groups are where we, as a big church, get better by getting smaller. In our groups, people get connected with each other on a personal level and make meaningful lasting friendships. Home Groups also serve as the best way to grow as a disciple together and with other people at Bethel Church. Through 2015, Home Groups have also grown in their involvement with church outreaches like our annual backpack giveaway and trunk or treat. We are also excited to be a large part of the coming Christmas Bike Giveaway in December. Nothing, though, communicates better what the Lord is doing through Home Groups than hearing from those who are attending and leading those groups. One person wrote this to their Home Group Leader, Renee Van Tyn. "It was wonderful to see you last night. I wanted to thank you for your suggestion to read one Psalm and one proverb each morning. Last night when I got home, I decided to read one proverb nightly with my son. We took turns reading, and then we discussed what it meant to us. It was awesome. I hadn't been doing any reading or devotions in my home with my son. He goes to Sunday School, but I realized I'm not leading him to the Word at all or sharing with him. We had a great conversation and were learning together. I wanted to say thank you. If not for your suggestion, I would have continued to miss the opportunity to read the Bible with my boy." Another person sent this to me about their leaders, Mark and Melanie Johnson. "Pastor Matt, I visited Mark and Melanie Johnson's Home Group tonight and have nothing but good things to say. They are absolutely: one, adorable; two, genuine; three, consecrated; four, on fire; five, focused; six, ad infinitum. It was just delightful. I am so proud of Bethel and the work you are all doing for the Lord." For Sarah and I, as well as all of our Home Group Leaders, our Home Groups are now a family whom we love. Our Home Groups have been a huge win for every individual involved. Then in 2016, we are working on multiplying those efforts into more groups in more homes, doing more outreach, so we can see realized at Bethel what was said in Acts 2:46 about the early church. "Every day they continued to meet together in the temple courts. They broke bread in their homes and ate together with glad and sincere hearts, praising God and enjoying the favor of all the people. And the Lord added to their number daily those who are being saved." Thank you, and we look forward to enjoying a Home Group with you next Sunday night.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jose David Subuyu, Spanish Ministry Director. It has been an honor to serve the Lord in this department along with my wife, Victoria Subuyu. Serving in this department gives us the opportunity to interact and join forces with other ministries, either translating, or lifting, moving boxes, or preaching from platform, any of these because we care for our neighbors in one square mile. One of the greatest joy is to see what God is doing, changing lives completely in our community and on daily basis. There is a family that came to one of our Spanish services hoping to find something as a last stride of their marriage. Sure enough, they found Jesus. Not only that, they opened their home for a Home Group Bible study. Recently, our last meeting attended over 25 people. Isn't it that great, just to learn about Jesus? I would like you to hear straight from them, the miracle that only Jesus can do. I have the honor to introduce you Juan and Esmeralda.
Good evening, friends. I'm pleased to report to you our seniors at this year's town hall meeting. As we look to 2016, our hope is in the Lord Jesus as we serve Him together. Seniors are always facing new challenges in life. There are always choices to be made, and as we get older, those challenges become more difficult. There are physical challenges, emotional, relationship, and financial. But as they have done for many years, if not all of their lives, pressed on holding to the truth of God's Word with faith believing in the promises and the faithfulness and the goodness of their loving heavenly Father. So in 2016, they'll stand firm until their Lord either calls them home or till He returns for them. Until then, one of their biggest challenges is loneliness, since many of them are unable to attend church on a regular basis. And their biggest need then is for people to visit them. And our aim for 2016 and beyond is home visitation. This is my ongoing dream for our seniors. I'm excited to say, we have just concluded two training sessions with a visitation team who will assist and visit our seniors in their homes with encouragement and prayer. If you would like to be a part of this very fulfilling ministry, please contact us here at the church. Our mission is to leave no one without a caring visit. We will continue our present activities, a lot of fun events for our seniors as they enjoy much of their time together in fellowship with one another. It is priceless to them. Well, Trilla and I are happy to serve this wonderful group of people, and we just pray God bless you and God bless our seniors. Thank you.
Good evening, Bethel Church. I'm so excited to report to you what an amazing year it's been in the college department in 2015. We're so thankful for the presence of God moving here at Bethel Church. This last year, we were blessed to connect with hundreds of students on the San Jose State University campus. Many of these students are away from home and on their own for the first time in their lives, and we were able to come alongside of them and to pray for them, encourage them, and walk with them through a significant part of their journey in life. Also, last summer, we were blessed to take a team of 23 young adults to minister to the people of Quito, Ecuador. It was an amazing God-ordained trip where we had the opportunity to minister to college campuses, help launch ministries, and to partner with churches to meet tangible needs in their community. We were blessed to see hundreds of people make a commitment to follow Jesus for the first time. 2015 has been an amazing year, but we're so excited for the direction that we're headed in 2016. This year, we're working to start student-led growth groups in each of the dorms on campus. We will provide an opportunity for students to meet together throughout the week in an effort to grow in their relationship with the Lord, to receive encouragement and equipping for the road ahead, and for students to have a time to pray with and for each other. You know, missions is a big part of Bethel Church, and this summer, we're going to be planning to be involved in missions both locally and abroad. Aside from a summer missions trip, we're excited to partner this year with Royal Family Kids Camp. See, throughout the year, as a college ministry, we're going to be raising funds to help send students to RFKC. We're also going to partner with them by attending RFKC as counselors to help ensure that no student gets left behind and that they have every opportunity to be changed by the love and the power of Jesus. I'd like to thank Pastor Allen and the board for their continued support and leadership. Thank you for seeing a need to minister to the young adults of this city.
Hello. Praise the Lord for all He has done in 2015 and will do next year. In 2015, the Young Marriages Ministry made some adjustments to how it ministers to the married or soon-to-be-married couples in Bethel's community. These adjustments were minor, but they were made to bring the Young Marriages Ministry into alignment with the goals of Bethel Church. So in 2015, we piloted adjustments in how we minister to married couples. First, we made the class on marriage offered on Sunday mornings, inclusive and seasonal. It's now an all-marriage class that follows the adult Sunday School seasons. We are nearly complete with the first offering led by Bob and Sandy Harvey. The attendance was comprised of married and engaged couples from multiple generations. What a healthy environment for young couples to be around seasoned couples, hearing their stories about how they are still working on their marriage, even after 40 years. I'm so pleased with how this new model works. Second, Home Groups led by young marriages. The ideal environment for young married couples to have community with other young married couples is in each other's homes. We made it a goal to have three new Home Groups that are led by young married couples this year. Praise the Lord. We now have two of those three new Home Groups led by young married couples. In 2016, we plan to continue these adjustments. Each marriage class will have as its goal to not only offer biblical marriage teaching, but to also encouragement to get connected in a Home Group at the end of the seasonal class. Marriage classes will be inclusive of all generations. Young couples can learn next to mature couples. We also hope this change helps our greeters as they take care of new people, a simple solution for all married and engaged couples, regardless of their age. Finally, we will encourage volunteering on Sunday morning at the end of each seasonal class. This is Bethel's goal, to entrust people with leadership. Seasonal classes afford this opportunity. Please pray for us, as we with God's help do our best to build Christ-centered marriages and new leaders through marriage ministry. Thank you.
Hello, Bethel Church. This past year, we have had some amazing wins in the junior high ministry at Bethel Church. Our campus Christian Club on Monroe Middle School is consistently growing, and we have built strong relationships with the administration on that campus, which has allowed us to serve at after-school events and lunchtime rallies alongside the school staff. We also have had several students join our family here at Bethel through our outreaches on Monroe's campus. We also had an incredible opportunity this summer with our junior high missions team, taking a team of 25 students to a growing home missions church in Rio Vista, California. There, we were able to assist their new children's pastor in leading a vacation Bible school. Our students were able to show the love of Christ to the community of Rio Vista, and we saw 75 children give their lives to Christ. We also are very excited that the transition from 5th to 6th grade has gone so smoothly for our families here at Bethel. We have seen a great number of our 5th grade students jump in to being an active part of our youth ministry as well as serving in it. 2015 was a great year, and 2016 is going to be even greater. This year at Monroe Middle School, our hope is that by the end of 2016, we will have outgrown our classroom we currently hold our club in and will need to move into the school's gym. We are praying that more students in our one-square-mile will connect with Bethel Church through our impact on their campus. This summer, we plan to offer multiple ways for our junior high students to follow the Great Commission. Students will have opportunities to impact the lives of children with the love of Jesus, both here in San Jose and somewhere in our district this summer. I wanted to say thank you to Gabrielle Allen for all of your support and hard work. We truly couldn't do this without you. I would also like to say thank you to Pastor Allen and the official board for their continued support and prayers as we prepare for 2016.
At Bethel Church, we intentionally build a place that people can call home. At Amplified Youth Ministries, it is our desire to be the third environment outside of school and home for teenagers. Life is not simple, rather, it's pretty messy. And in light of this, throughout 2015, we have strategically focused on making the path to a relationship with Jesus and to be a part of Bethel's family, simple for teenagers. We strive to make the vision clear and bring it to pass daily through several venues such as camps, missions trips, first-serve opportunities, leadership programs, campus ministry, being involved in worship teams on Sundays, children's ministries, and the diplomatic corps. It's not enough for a teenager to be a part of youth ministry, but they must love and serve their church. There are so many life-changing stories that saturate the youth ministry. I could tell you about Cassie Hager, Evelyn Peña, Jaden Stanton, and the Chinkizi family, and many more. But tonight, along with many testimonies, you will hear from Romaine Stably. She is one story that represents the heartbeat of Amplified Youth Ministry. These stories do not belong alone to Amplified, but to Bethel Church. We are a generation's church, and because we embrace each other, regardless of age, ethnicity, socioeconomic background, we have seen and will continue to see God transform our one-square-mile in San Jose and Santa Clara, one life at a time. Looking to 2016, we are believing for significant growth in our community outreaches aimed at teenagers here on the Bethel campus and the school campuses, the multiplication of leadership and greater effectiveness in our discipleship of teenagers. Matt and I are honored to be a part of this family. Thank you, Bethel, for partnering with us to love and disciple teenagers. Official Board for having the courage to allow people like us to dream crazy dreams. Gabrielle Allen for working hard every day to bring the vision of Amplified to past. And Pastor Brett and Valerie for seeing beyond what is to what can be in young people, for your constant support of not simply what we do, but of who we are. We serve alongside an amazing pastoral staff, gifted, talented, but above all, godly.
One of the greatest privileges I have is the opportunity to invest into the next generation of church leaders through the Bethel School of Leadership. This past year has been one for the books. Currently, we have a group of young men and women serving at a high level within Bethel Church. They are being trained, mentored, equipped, to fulfill the calling God has placed on their life. These young leaders have been stretched beyond what they thought they were capable, grown beyond what they imagined, and have had an impact they wouldn't believe even if someone would have told them about it. Every one of our current students is pursuing their license to preach with the Assemblies of God this next year. Bethel, we have all had a hand in that. At the core of who we are, we value dearly mentoring the next generation, and we have an obligation to give our best to our best. And Bethel School of Leadership is one of the ways that we do that. I could not be more proud of this group of people and their heart to serve, their passion to lead people towards Christ, and their discipline to pay the price that godly leadership demands. Tonight, among the many stories you will hear, you will be hearing from Michael Gandhi. He is one man that represents the kind of stories you hear coming from the Bethel School of Leadership. You will continue to see this group of young men and women throughout Bethel Church in 2016, leading, serving, investing their abilities to see eternal fruit produced around them. Bethel Church, this is our win. It is a home run, not for one man or one woman, but for our church family. The leaders at this time in history that are coming out of Bethel Church are a testament to the heart, love, and vision that we collectively have at Bethel Church. Well done.
Hello, I'm Matt Clayton, Santa Clara Campus Pastor. 2015, it's been a great year for our campus. Our mission is to be a home for our one-square-mile, a place for individuals and families to come experience the love and life-changing power of God's Word in this church. We have honored the people of our neighborhood by community events such as an Easter egg hunt lock party, as well as the back-to-school bash. You know what? I'm thrilled to tell you about the ministry happening each Sunday at an assisted living home right across the street from our campus. Each Sunday, a volunteer team heads over to love, encourage, and minister with weekly Bible study and time of worship with these lovely people. You know, we've obeyed the Great Commission and mentored the next generation through the launch of Starting Point. This weekly group helps those new to Bethel or Jesus connect into the family and build a healthy foundation for their journey with Christ. We have a thriving youth ministry and kids ministries on Sunday mornings and a Santa Clara youth home group. Our adult growth groups are literally filling the house with life each Sunday morning. We now offer Home Groups located in Santa Clara and Sunnyvale. You know, I love the fact that when you attend our campus on a Sunday morning, you witness a church representing the diversity of our community. Movement, it's key in discipleship. Discipleship is not simply about personal growth through learning, but also about reproducing in others what Christ has done in you. At Bethel, we seek to entrust people with leadership. We witnessed a huge growth in the number of people volunteering in all ministries from children's, youth, Celebrate Recovery, Pacific Gardens Assisted Living, Safety Teams, Ushers, and Greeters. And our campus has seen massive upgrades, it's worth noting. A brand-new parking lot filled with new lights and landscaping, a refurbished house. I could go on. Wow. Our community is noticing the difference. Praise the Lord for all He's done in Santa Clara in 2015, and I'm anticipation filled with it for the next. We're going to see even greater connections with our neighborhood, a home. It's our mission, it's our focus. That's what we're here for in our community. H-O-M-E for Santa Clara.
What a privilege it is to serve here at Bethel Church. Our Starting Point class has continued to consistently grow and help newcomers become a part of Bethel Church. We are now doing this class on both of our campuses. We've had over 70 people attend Starting Point so far this past year. Our staff and ministry teams are doing a great job directing all of our newcomers to this class, and its success is directly related to the cumulative effort of our entire church. It's exciting to watch as people who have come through our Starting Point class are now being baptized, becoming members, and moving into serving and leading in various ministries here at Bethel Church. All of our live-free ministries are serving our community well and being led by the members of our church. We are living out the E of our H-O-M-E. That is, we are empowering people with leadership. Our live-free ministries continue to offer Celebrate Recovery, Financial Peace University, Grief Share, and Divorce Care. We've launched a new ministry this past year to support those who are caregivers to dementia and Alzheimer's patients. We've had a great response to this group and have seen it bring God's love and support to many who so often feel all alone and heavy burdened with such a large task. We've had over 200 people participate in our live-free groups this past year. It's our goal in 2015 to continue to create continuity and unity among all of our live-free ministry teams and to serve our church and community at an even higher level. On another note, it's been a privilege for our office to assist and support our church families in 17 funerals so far this year. Thank you to Pastor Brett, our official church board, and to you, the congregation of Bethel Church, for your great support and trust in us again this year.
Recently, I have made some decisions that have caused some questions, and Pastor Brett was kind enough to give me this opportunity simply to try to make some clarification. So before I talk about the exact decisions, and I want to tell you what they are and what they're not. The decisions that I have made, first of all, were not punitive. They were not made to punish anyone or to try to prove a point. They were not made by someone who does not have an understanding of choir and orchestra. I started playing for a choir when I was nine years old, so it's been like 10 years. And here's probably the most important thing that I can say. These decisions were not Pastor Brett's idea. They were my idea. He and I spent a lot of time talking about them, and I really felt in my heart that we needed to go into a particular direction. And those of you that, you may not know this, but when this stage was remodeled, probably 60 to 70% of the expenditure on this stage remodel was for the choir loft. That would not have been done by a senior pastor as fiscally responsible as Pastor Brett if he had no intention of keeping a choir and orchestra. So you need to understand that I was not pressured into anything. These are decisions that I made. Now, what these decisions are, these decisions that I made are based upon my love and respect for the people that I serve, as well as you, my brothers and sisters of this family. This decision is based upon my desire to seek God's heart about what the future of this church is and whatever direction He wants me to go to help attain whatever He has in mind. And these decisions were also discussed fully with the official board, soliciting their opinion about it. They gave me a wide berth, but I walked in really kind of having in my heart what I wanted the decisions to be. Here's the point. We have developed a different rhythm for the choir and the orchestra. We have not axed the choir. We have not axed the orchestra. What we instead have done is I am creating these opportunities for the choir and the orchestra to be able to do what they do in moments that are specially made for them and not necessarily a blurring of responsibility. And I don't want to go into detail about that. If you're interested in a little bit more detail, you can talk to me personally. I don't want to take a lot of time. But rest assured, the most important thing is that we have not gotten rid of the choir and the orchestra. They sang for Veterans Day. They will be singing for Thanksgiving Eve. They will be singing for Christmas Eve. On Tuesday, we will be singing at Santana Row. We will be singing at Christmas in the Park. We're going to be singing at the VA Hospital in Palo Alto. So we are still functioning, so rest assured that that's okay. I just want to give them and the orchestra the appropriate platform that is suited to that particular thing. Now, I just want to talk about philosophy real quick. There are a couple of reasons that things remain the same, and here's one. Sometimes we want to be the last bastion of something. We don't want to go the way of everyone else. We want to shake our fist in the air. We want to shake our fist in the air and say things like, "I don't care what everyone else is doing. We will continue to do what we do, and I am that person." I kept this going the way it was going for a long time because that was my mentality. Unfortunately, this often keeps us from realizing the new things that God might have in store. And so perpetuating something like this just because of that reason is a bit prideful. Another reason that we perpetuate what we do is because we, who were involved in it, consider it a personal catharsis. It's the way I feel good about who I am. It's what I bring to the table, so to speak. It's what God has blessed me with. But again, unfortunately, that will keep us from growing in ways that God has in store for us that we will not bear in mind because we are so used to doing what we do the way we've always done it. So honestly, it can be a little bit selfish for us to perpetuate something just because we want it the way it always has. And when you think of it, perpetuating something for pride or selfishness is not necessarily the healthiest thing. So that's the first thing. Choir and orchestra is still functioning. It is going to function throughout the year, at particular times specially suited to them. The other question that's been asked about a lot is Christmas Spectacular. Some of you are wondering, why aren't we doing Christmas Spectacular? Well, I'm going to tell you a few of the reasons and then tell you why I'm so excited about why we're doing what we're doing. Over the past few years, we have seen a steady decline in both the choir and the orchestra, and this attrition has been caused by several factors. People moving away, people retiring out of our ranks. And our choir is getting a little bit more mature. And as such, the physical demands of standing for seven to 10 performances are becoming prohibitive for a lot of my people. So that was a strong consideration. Also, in terms of Christmas Spectacular, the infrastructure, and I've been doing this since before I was employed here, when Laurie Burtig was the music director, and I would come alongside him and help him. This is probably the mid-'80s. So I've had a few of these under my belt. But I've seen the infrastructure slowly deteriorate and to facilitate an outreach this big. And that's really caused us to suffer. Key personnel that were part of my team have either moved away or they've bowed out of future involvement because of scheduling issues. And that's not isolated to just the production team. Staffing personnel last year, like ushers, was really, really difficult, causing those involved to work far too many performances. Adult participation in our drama honestly has waned over the years. And in 2014, over the course of two days of drama auditions, I had one adult male try out. Every male that you saw up on the stage for Christmas Spectacular 2014 took an exorbitant amount of time and effort to recruit. And exciting things are happening every Sunday, and those things demand more time and creative energy from me and from my staff in Worship Arts. So that coupled with the enormity of Christmas Spectacular, simply, it's just not sustainable for those of us on the Worship Arts staff. Now, interestingly enough, many of you have said that the intensive schedule of Christmas Spectacular hasn't allowed you to participate. And I would like to do something that's going to allow you to participate with a more sustainable schedule throughout the year. I want to better leverage what we do. Christmas Spectacular, as wonderful as it is, is a really pretty, a pretty big departure from our standard Sunday experience. So what you're going to see this year is a Sunday experience kind of industrial strength at a Bethel Christmas, not something that is such a wide departure. And though we have given away a lot of CDs through the years, the Tell Me More CDs, the retention of those people within these walls has been relatively low. Now, I know that we are trying to foster the kingdom at large, but honestly, when it comes to the taxing of our people, many of you that were involved to the hilt, we want to do it in a way that's much more sane. Also, as a pastoral staff, we're trying to align ourselves with all the way across the flow of pacing of Bethel Church across a given year. And Sunday mornings are consistently bearing fruit. People are coming to the Lord every Sunday. We have wonderful worship, deepening community. And so we want to put our Christmas outreach on the days when we are at our best, which are these Sunday things. Now, I know that these changes can be difficult. I understand that. I do, I understand it. But I also want to give you, end my time with you, with a little bit of a testimony. I just want to say that cool things can happen when you allow God to mold you. For those of you who don't know me, I came here just to play the piano. But God did a new thing, and He placed me as music director of what I consider to be one of the best churches in America, and definitely one of the best churches in the Assemblies of God. I love this local church, and I never aspired to be a part of our district, but God did a new thing and placed me in the position of District Music Director over 460 churches. I was very happy being a music director and never aspired to becoming a full-fledged minister, but God did a new thing, and this year, I was humbled to receive my ordination. And though I've spent almost half my life at this church, I was very happy with the way the things were. I had a well-oiled machine going. I have never said, "I don't know," so much as I have in the last couple of years. Well, what are we going to, "I don't know"? But how about the "I don't know"? Well, what are we going to stand, "I don't know"? I don't know. So God is teaching me, He's recycling my dependence and my reliance upon Him. So as I end my time with you, I simply want to ask you this. I want you to consider this question, to project my personal journey upon you. Is there a particular thing that God is trying to do? A new thing that God is trying to do in your life? Would you ask Him, "Lord, what new thing do you want to accomplish in me"? Thank you.